Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is now 7:30, and I'd like to call this October 26th, Meeting of the City Council, to order. Would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? And will the clerk please call a roll?
McHale?
Here.
Budmats?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Viniziano?
Here.
Bessesi?
Here.
Reyes?
Here.
Soneika?
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded, these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel, as well as other media outlets. The first order of business tonight is to approve previous meeting minutes. Just a forewarning, there are four sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first is of the October 12th City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve that set of minutes?
Come on.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Thank you, Alderman Viniziano, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Feedback on the mic. Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the October 12th City Council meeting minutes are approved. The next set goes back in time to the October 11th Special City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
Hmm.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika, is there a second? Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the October 11th City Council meeting minutes are approved. Moving on to October 13th Special City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
Come on.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, and the ayes have it. It's going to be unanimous, so... Uh, moving on to the final set of minutes here, it's for October 18th Special City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
Come on.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This set of minutes for October 18th are approved. This brings us on to the next item here, which is the mayor's report. I don't have much to report, other than the fact that Chief Nowacki, sitting in his role as temporary city manager, provided us an update about the 2020 census report for the city of Rolling Meadows. And it looks like we grew by 101 inhabitants, up to 24,200. And he and I had a conversation about that last week, and whether it's true that we actually grew in population, or from my biased perspective, the complete count committee did a phenomenal job recruiting, uh, current inhabitants to complete the census. Either way, it shows growth in a time of decline, so it's always good to see that for our small city and its growth. Are there any other ward reports this evening? Okay, if there are no ward reports, then we would move on to open the floor for 20 minutes for public comment. However, I understand that there are two individuals that have signed in, but do not wish to speak unless we request them to, and at this time, it doesn't look like that is the case. However, if we get to those consent ordinances, and that's the case, then we can make a motion to open the floor. So moving on to items pending, we can look at line item A, which is ordinance number 21-54, and that's to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency for the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Viniziano, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Viniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item B, ordinance number 21-55, and that's to approve the property tax levy abatement. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Come on.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Viniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item C, ordinance number 21-56, and that's to approve the property tax levy for the city of Rolling Meadows. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Come on.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Thank you, Alderman Viniziano, for the second. Any discussion on this item? Alderman Soneika?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to highlight that this year, uh, for the fiscal year 2022, uh, the city council will not be increasing taxes for the property tax levy. Um, they will be the same rates as the prior fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Alderman Bessesi?
Yes, uh, and I will be voting yes on this. However, I am, uh, still a little concerned about, uh, inflation and, and other factors that could cause us, uh, potentially some problems, but I think we're still in a safe zone, so I still will be ordering, or still be, uh, voting yes.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing no further discussion, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Viniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Finally, moving on to line item D, ordinance number 21-57, is to approve property tax levy for the Rolling Meadows Library. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Come on.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Viniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This now brings us to line item E, ordinance number 21-58, and that's to approve the receipt and use of the monies received from the coronavirus fiscal recovery fund. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Alderman Viniziano, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Budmats?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, the title of this, the receipt and use of monies received, it doesn't, I don't think we're actually approving any way that we're using, we're just approving the federal guidelines, so I just wanted to make motion, uh, notice the fact that there's actually no uses of the money at this point outlined, or, um, so that nobody thinks that we've decided how we're going to spend this money at this time.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, uh, seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Viniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to the next item on the agenda, and that is the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of four items, those are items F through I. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Alderman O'Brien?
Item G, please, Mayor.
Any others wish to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay. Well, seeing no further items to be pulled, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the three ordinances in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Come on.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika, is there a second? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. This brings us to the first line item, line item F, ordinance number 21-00, and that's to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Moving on to line item H, ordinance number 21-00, to grant a special use for outdoor storage in an M1 zoning district at 3831 Industrial Avenue. And line item I, ordinance number 21-00, at this time, to amend section 122-606H of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows, Illinois, to allow electronic message signs for religious institutions in a residential zoning district. The question is, shall the three ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Viniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, they will be moved forward for second reading. This brings us back to line item G, ordinance number 21-00, to grant approval of a special use authorization, a major change to the marketplace of Rolling Meadows Plan Development authorized by ordinance 99-17, and other relief necessary to allow for modification of the existing wall signage for Walmart at 1460 Gulf Road. Is there a motion to move this forward for second reading? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman, uh, Viniziano. Alderman O'Brien, you asked to pull this, so you can start off with the discussion?
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's more of just a, a comment, I'll just reopen to my peers, uh, thoughts or questions. Since we're looking at that area from an EDC perspective, as well as councils talk about that, I was wondering if we can ask staff to work with the applicant from a visual perspective, since I'm all in support of the updated visual signage and things, but at the whole area as a visual, because I think there's some, some dead trees around there and things like that, so I, I don't know the specifics, but just from a visual perspective, all four, the, the sign variations that we've been presented with, but holistically, if we could look at the visual aspect, that would be great, too.
Appreciate that. And if, if I could have for staff to assist me with transparency, to help us understand the request to pull this, how, how will this enable, uh, ease or efficiency if staff works with the matter, so we can make sure that it's clear to the residents as we move this forward?
Um, so I, the, one of the petitioners is here, and I can have a conversation with them to address some of these issues. I'm sure we'll work together to identify and discuss those with them, so that they can hopefully either address them prior to the next meeting, or at least provide us with a plan as to when those, um, issues might be resolved.
Wonderful. So this should enable, uh, greater lines of communication, essentially?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Any other, uh, comments or discussion on this item? Okay, no further discussion, and the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Viniziano?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will move forward for second reading. This now brings us to line item J, which is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for October 26th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion on this item, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes?
Yes.
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Viniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent resolutions. This consists of nine items. Those are items K through S. Does any alderman wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Wonderful. Seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the nine resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Come on.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Beginning with line item K, resolution number 21-R-99, is to appoint John Nowacki as the IPBC delegate representative, and Joyce DeLeon as the alternate representative. Line item L, resolution number 21-R-100, is to appoint John Nowacki as the IMRF delegate representative, and Joyce DeLeon as the alternate representative. Line item M, resolution number 21-R-101, is to appoint John Nowacki as the IRMA delegate representative, and Joyce DeLeon as the alternate representative. Line item N, resolution number 21-R-102, is to approve New Wilkie and Algonquin Intersection Roadway and Pedestrian Improvement Project Phase II and Right-Away of Acquisition Engineering Services. Line item O, resolution number 21-R-103, is to approve the local public agency agreement for federal participation with Illinois Department of Transportation for proposed Algonquin and New Wilkie Intersection Improvement Project Phase II Engineering and Right-Away Acquisition. Line item P, resolution number 21-R-104, is to approve local public agency agreement for federal participation with Illinois Department of Transportation for proposed Meadow Brook Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Project over Salt Creek, Phase I Engineering. Line item Q, resolution number 21-R-105, is to award a contract for Phase I Engineering Services for Meadow Brook Drive Bridge Rehabilitation over Salt Creek. Line item R, resolution number 21-R-106, is to approve a letter of understanding with the Village of Schaumburg to clarify ownership and maintenance responsibilities for the bike path on the north side of Hartong Road. Lastly, line item S, resolution number 21-R-107, is to authorize the submission of an application for a Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Brick Grant through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The question is, shall the nine resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Soneika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Viniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. Excuse me. That brings the council to other business and reports. I do not have any appointments this evening, nor do I have any proclamations. Does the city clerk have anything to report?
No, not tonight.
Thank you. Then this will move us on to the city staff reports. Just a reminder, there are no discussions during the staff reports. The first item we have are the community items of interest, and for this, I will defer to Lori Sezak. Lori, when you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. The October newsletter can be found on the city's website. Please visit, uh, citirm.org and click on the News and Views tab. The city is holding a blood drive on Thursday, October 28th, from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the City Hall Council chambers. Masks will be required, and donors must pre-register at vitalent.org, or by calling 877-258-4825. The new Rolling Meadows Halloween Fest will take place on Saturday, October 30th, which is this Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Community Church, 2720 Kirchoff Road. This free, family-friendly event will fit, feature trick-or-treating at booths and vehicles hosted by city officials, departments, committees, and other nonprofit organizations. There will be pony rides, petting zoo, caricatures, balloon twisting, and, and a DJ will also be present. The Rolling Meadows Police Department will be participating in the Halloween Step Campaign from October 16th to November 1st. They will be actively enforcing DUI violations, speeding, unlawful use of cell phone while operating a motor vehicle, seat belt enforcement, and child safety seat violations. The Rolling Meadows Police Department is excited to announce a new program to help residents in need during life's toughest challenges. The New Hope Fund will assist victims of disasters, domestic violence, child abuse, and other hardships that necessitate the need for financial assistance. Donations to the Hope Fund can be made by visiting the GoFundMe page located at gofundme.com/f/rmpd-hope-fund. The city's Public Works Department will host its first pumpkin compost collection, a green initiative for the residents of Rolling Meadows. Residents are encouraged to bring their carved or whole pumpkins from Friday, November 1st, or on Friday, November 1st, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., or Saturday, November 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., to the Public Works Facility located at 39 Birdnik Street. For complete program details, please email pw@citirm.org, or call 847-963-0500. Thank you.
Thank you for providing those, uh, community items of interest. This will move us on to the September 2021 new businesses. For this, we will defer to Martha Corrider. Martha?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we're pleased to announce, um, three additions to the Rolling Meadows Business Community. The first is Kumon Math and Reading Center at 2065 Plum Grove Road, that's next to CBS and the long vacant Quiznos space. We also have a new home occupation, Warm Dreams Home Remodeling. And third, we have Vaccinate, which is a producer and distributor of hand soaps and cleaning products. They're located in the Mercury Corporate Center on Newport Drive, um, at 5420 Newport Drive. Thank you.
Nice, that's good to hear. Uh, moving on to our third item within the city staff reports, we will address the November 9th, 2021 City Council Draft Agenda, and for this, we'll defer to our temporary city manager and chief Nowacki.
Thank you very much, Mayor, City Council. The draft agenda for November 9th is as follows. The first item is going to be a motion to approve the city council minutes of October 19th for the Committee of the Whole meeting, and the October 26th City Council meeting. Uh, pending items are going to be a second reading of an ordinance to approve extending the state of emergency due to COVID for Rolling Meadows. Uh, second, there'll be a second reading ordinance to grant approval authorizing a major change to the marketplace of Rolling Meadows Plan Development authorized by ordinance 99-17. There'll also be a second reading for an ordinance to grant a special use of outdoor storage in an M1 zoning district. Continuing, there will be a second reading for an ordinance to amend section 122-606H of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows. It's regarding allow electronic message signs for religious institutions in residential zoning districts. Under consent ordinances, we have a first reading to approve extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Have a first reading to amend the alcohol liquor code to increase the number of licenses permitted under the Class 1, B1, excuse me, liquor license. We also have a first reading for an ordinance to authorize disposal of surplus city for the property of Rolling Meadows. Uh, we have approved payment of bills on warrants, and then under consent resolutions, we have several. Have a resolution to acknowledge and accept the fiscal year 2022 Rolling Meadows Library budget. Resolution to adopt fiscal year 2022 City of Rolling Meadows budget. Resolution to approve the retainment of closed session minutes and recordings. Resolution to approve purchase of fuel system software update. Resolution to approve contract for final engineering for Park Street Storm Sword Project. A resolution to approve a contract for the purchase and installation of access control and video surveillance equipment and software. Last resolution on the agenda is to authorize a purchase of a snow ice control road salt for winter 2021, 2022 season. We do have a clerk's report for the presentation of the 2022 City Council, uh, meetings. We have community items of interest. We have staff report for the September 2021 financials. Staff report for the November 16th Committee of the Whole draft agenda. And last but not least is a November 23rd City Council draft agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I think I say it every month, but I can't believe we're already talking about November. So, uh, it's moving quickly. And with that, we'll move on to matters not on the agenda. Are there any matters not on the agenda? Alderman Soneika?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I also wanted to, um, talk about the, the census, the, the results of that, and, and I wanted to thank by name all of the members of the committee that, uh, helped make sure that our count was accurate, or as accurate as possible for 2020, including Mayor Joe Gallo, Ms. Lativa Fields with the Mayor, Mayor's Caucus, student volunteer Kyla Geitner, resident Robert Losh, resident Megan Goblick, former city manager Barry Crumpstock, IT coordinator Wesen Khan, and assistant to the city manager Lori Sezak. Uh, the Rolling Meadows Census Committee began meeting prior to COVID-19. Uh, outbreaks first hit the U.S., and when the state of emergency prohibited in-person meetings, the committee continued organizing by moving efforts through strategic and innovative means, and working with partners such as Univision, La Niña Chocana, and the Rolling Meadows Library. Because of their work, the city of Rolling Meadows maintained numbers to ensure that the city and regional planning will meet actual needs of our population for the next 10 years, and that includes federal funding for COVID-19 relief and infrastructure. So I cannot thank enough all of those who helped, and, and those who helped those who, who Outbreaks first hit the U.S., and when the state of emergency prohibited in-person meetings, the committee continued organizing by moving efforts through strategic and innovative means and working with partners such as Univision, La Niñez Ocala, and the Rolling Meadows Library. Because of their work, the city of Rolling Meadows maintains numbers to ensure that the city and regional planning will meet actual needs of our population for the next 10 years, and that includes federal funding for COVID-19 relief and infrastructure. So I cannot thank enough all of those who helped, and those who helped those who weren't necessarily named here in order to get to where they needed to go for these events and work with our partners. I really look forward to working with any of these individuals again on future civic projects to make sure that really the hard and important work is done in the city. If you're ever interested in volunteering with the city, we have so much work to do. Please feel free to reach out either to myself at ward7@citirm.org, reach out to the mayor, or to any of the city's staff. We'd be happy to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Any other matters not on this evening's agenda? Alderman Veneziano?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So I brought this up back, I believe, in August, just before school started. We've had some residents with some concerns again with the traffic on Central Road with the high school. So I will let Chief Nowacki again just reiterate what the plan is for that area with the high school traffic. I know there's been some increase with the kids having more of an open campus. They're leaving the school more often throughout the day, so the PD is aware of that and kind of the actions that they're taking in that effort.
That is correct. We've been increasing traffic enforcement in that area, and this year has seen a lot more individuals driving to school instead of using bus transportation. I know some of our grammar schools and junior highs are seeing more parents driving the students to school, but like I said, we will continue our efforts, and like I said, you'll see us out there, so make sure you obey the speed limits. And like I said, there's definitely children around, and like I said, safety is everybody's concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Any other matters not on this evening's agenda? Okay, seeing no further matters. Alderman Reyes, no? There is a request to go into closed session. There are three items that we will review in closed session. The first is the review of closed session minutes under 5 ILCS 120/2C 21 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act, and this is the semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by section 2.06. Then we will discuss land sales under 5 ILCS 120/2C 6 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act for the setting of a price for sale or lease of a property owned by the public body. And finally, under personnel, 5 ILCS 120/2C 1 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. This does require a motion and a roll call vote, and so with that, do I have a motion?
Come on.
Thank you, Alderman Soneika. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, then we'll ask that the clerk please call the roll.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneika.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open sessions, so with that, I wish you all a wonderful evening, and we'll see you next time.